Okay, it's one oh five. I'm gonna get started. I appreciate everybody's time once again. Um, I, my name is Melvin Edwards. I'm the chairman of the Planning and Economic Development Committee for the City of Council. Um, we are joined by a, uh, my president, um, counselor Jesse Letterman. My colleague on the council also, uh, counselor LeVar Click, counselor Tim Allen, I see is here. Uh, and Attorney Tal UG, I believe, uh, the, is the attorney assigned by the city to oversee cannabis regulations. And, um, we have several other guests. I'm not going to most people's names and are on the screens. Uh, for the sake of everybody's time, I'm not gonna go through and introduce everybody other than my colleagues as they come on board. But any of you, um, who are going to speak, uh, and principally what I'm really interested in hearing from are the owners and representatives of the invited operations of cannabis in the city. So if you could, at the time that you are, yeah, could you guys at least introduce yourselves to our audience? And then, um, just whenever you speak, just make sure we know exactly who you are. Uh, we are also, I see being joined by Counselor Fenton, uh, and Counselor Govan. And, um, uh, we have some members of the media as well. Um, but like I said, I'm not gonna go into trying to waste a lot of time going over who, as people trickle in other than recognizing my colleagues, which I see Counselor Maria Perez is now, uh, on the call. She is also a member of the Planning and Economic Development Committee. Hello, Maria, welcome. Um, I have one question, which is, I think, okay, I think we're all set. Um, I have, the agenda of today is the discussion and an update of the, um, HCA requirements of the three operational cannabis dispensaries that are now operating in the city of Springfield. Um, and in no particular order, um, which are, uh, I'd like to kind of hear. Probably I could start with Attorney G, if that be appropriate. Um, because I believe is, um, with the HC's that were, uh, issued to, uh, NSA, Liberty and Six Bricks. They had certain requirements, uh, and I believe that the entity that would have had oversight of those um, would have been, uh, the city's, uh, Tal UG. Uh, so Attorney G, could you just speak on, um, if, uh, the three operational cannabis dispensaries are fulfilling their obligations as to your knowledge?
Good afternoon, Counselor Edwards. Sure, and I, I'm just going to, um, pull up my notes that I created for this meeting. Um, in speaking with the, a- as you know, the HCAs have many, um, requirements and there's different, um, departments that are stakeholders. Um, I know that, um, traffic concerns and, and public safety is also, I think, on your agenda as well. So I can, um, generally speak to that. In terms of the requirements of the HCAs, that is, um, oper- that goes into the operations, which is handled by, um, the Department of Health and Human Services. And the financial piece is handled by the, the Office of, um, Management and Budget. The last time that I was in contact with those departments, my understanding was that, um, the operators had fulfilled their obligations, um, under the HCAs. That was the last that I had heard from those department. Um.
And you said last, you have a timeframe from when that last report was brought to your attention?
Yes, that was approximately, and I'm sorry, there's thirteen HCAs that were issued, so sometimes it's hard to keep track of which ones, um, I spoke to who about, but, um, within the, the fall or the winter.
All right, actually, and just for clarity, my, uh, the scope of this inquiry or just, uh, the, uh, i- is to listen or to talk about the three that are already operational. I know that we have several in the pipeline, but, uh, Liberty, NSA and Six Bricks are open. They are operating and I like to kind of just focus on those, on those three in terms of how things are going. Um, and, um, whether or not there was any issues or concerns and also delve into how to make things even better, uh, operationally if we can.
Uh, sure, and thank you for that clarification to generally those three, the three operators that are open have maintained, um, great relationships and lines of communication with, uh, myself, with the Department of Health and Human Services. Um, at the times that I have needed to reach out to those three operators, I have received a response immediately, or if not within twenty-four hours. Um, so I would say that the operations from my standpoint are going well.
Uh, it would be appropriate this time to hear from, uh, the representatives of, say, each of you, uh, individual, uh, operators. Uh, either the owner or the representatives, I'm not exactly sure who is the attached to each entity except for, I see Jimmy. Jamie Ware is listed as a title, uh, of, uh, for Liberty. Uh, Jamie, could we get us started and could you speak on your, uh, conditions or your, um, um, the requirements of your HCA and have you been able to fulfill them? And have they been difficult? Uh, are you having any concerns around those issues?
Um, hi, everyone. My name is Jamie Ware. I'm here today on behalf of Liberty Cannabis. Um, I'm the SVP of Government Affairs. Uh, I apologize, our CEO is not available for this call, but hopefully I can answer all of your questions as fully as possible. Um, so, under the terms of our HCA, we are required to, um, make a payment to, um, Springfield, uh, the city, DHSS, and we have fulfilled both those requirements. I did check with my finance team before joining this meeting, just to double confirm that. Um, so we are all good there. Um, I will say that in terms of the hiring, uh, requirements and what I would say, I'd say goals. Um, because you know, it's, it's hard to hit exact numbers each time. But, um, in terms of, uh, the, both the racial, um, and what I will just say, for lack of a better term, the sex of the individuals we're hiring, we're very close to our targets. I also, oh, go ahead, excuse me.
Um, could you also speak to the, uh, community engagement component?
Um, yes, so my understanding, I read the agenda for the meeting today. My understanding is that this was about the community engagement component as required by the, um, by the HCA. So what's required by the HCA is that payment to DHSS and our hiring practices, trying to make sure that we hire as diverse and a, as representative, um, employment base as that is representative of the, um, Springfield population. And, uh, so that's what I came prepared to talk about today.
Okay, thank you. Um, before I move on to one of the other entities, uh, would any of my colleagues have any questions for, um, this, for Libby, uh, Miss, uh, uh, Ware? Okay, um, is there, I believe Peyton Schubert, you're here representing Six Bricks. Peyton, could you speak to the same, uh, questions, please?
Most certainly, and good afternoon. Are you all able to hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Uh, so, thank you all for the opportunity to share, uh, the work that Six Bricks has been able to do thus far. Um, we are very grateful to be in the city of Springfield, um, and excited to share, um, some of what we've been able to accomplish. As it relates to our host community agreement, we have met all of our obligations, including a seven-day police detail. Um, working with fifty percent or more vendors from the city of Springfield. As we thought about both our build-out as well as, uh, the regular vendors we would use as it relates to simple functions like our exit bags as well as, uh, creative controls, working with local entrepreneurs such as visionary acts as it relates to creating content. Um, we maintain our status as Black woman and family-owned. And as we, um, start to unpack, um, what we'll be doing, progressing forward. Um, we continue to show a commitment to the city of Springfield by engaging with our neighboring, uh, businesses and neighborhood councils in order to maintain good standing. Um, so we did create the Community Advisory Board, engaging both Lower Liberty Heights, New North Citizens Council, Wayfinders, as well as Freedom Credit Union, to ensure that they know about our events, what we're doing and how we're doing it, uh, to maintain a strong relationship there. As we think overall about our sponsorships, um, we were able to sponsor seven events in the city of Springfield. We hosted three events at White Lion, um, which has been a strong partnership for us. As it relates to our employment, more than fifty-one percent of both our salaried and hourly employees are Springfield residents with our salaried employees maintaining sixty-six percent and our hourly employees maintaining sixty-four percent. Um, we have a total employee population of seventeen. Um, as we think about progression forward, having only opened our doors on September twenty-fourth, uh, we look forward to engaging with the city of Springfield as the true, um, independent operator here in the city of Springfield. Um, please let me know if you have any comments, questions or concerns.
To my colleagues, any questions for, uh, Six Bricks? Uh, Jamie? Miss Ware?
Thank you, Councilman, and I apologize, I did forget, and I'm, I'm very glad that Peyton remembered and reminded me. We are, uh, there is also an obligation to work with local contractors under the HCA and we are currently in, um, working, uh, with nine local contractors, so I just wanted to make sure that you had that information. Additionally, any other information that I was not prepared with today, uh, considering things that are outside of the HCA, of course, I'm happy to provide at a later time. I was just working off the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Uh, hearing no other questions from my colleagues? Uh, Steven, I assume this is Steven representing, uh, NSA?
Yes, Counselor Edwards, thank you Steve Riley for NSA. Uh, just to cover a few of the points, we actually have two HCAs in the city of Springfield, so we have one, uh, for West Columbus Ave as well as five oh six Cottage Street, uh, up in East Springfield. Uh, we're fully in compliant with, with both of those HCAs, um, largely what those amount to our financial contributions, uh, both through percentages and then the original HCA, which contributes to schools and education and the, uh, Springfield Police Department as well. Um, we've exceeded our, uh, diversity in Springfield hiring numbers, both, um, on Cottage Street as well as, uh, West Columbus Ave. Um, and we're also compliant with other financial obligations under the HCAs, um, including non-HCA obligations like charitable contributions in the city in support of local events like Jazz and Roots, uh, as one example. Um, and we have also full compliance with our security requirements and local vendor requirements in those agreements as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions for, um, any of my colleagues? We are now joined by Counselor Justin Hurst as well. Uh, any questions from my colleagues, from Mr. Riley? Miss, uh, if it's appropriate, Mr. Riley, could you, um, I hadn't given a lot of thought to the fact that you now operate a recreational and a medicinal. Has there been any changes in regards to, um, the original HCA and agreement and for the operations? And how they are now blended, uh, and any of you, um, I've, I've heard, um, unfortunately, I'm not a, uh, I don't, uh, use, uh, cannabis personally, so, but from my understanding, a lot of the sales are related to things around, uh, sleep and pain management and anxiety and dress, things like that. So is there a blending now or i- is the regulations related to the medicinal? How are they blending over into the recreational side? And any of you who are, uh, operators could please, you know, feel free to jump in on that question.
Uh, they're, they're largely the same products, other than the, the dosing sides, sizes for edibles. Um, in terms of our host community agreements, uh, there's really been no change because we operate these stores separately. So our store on, uh, Cottage Street is medical only, so that's a strictly medical host agreement. And then the one on West Columbus Ave is adult use.
Okay, thank you.
And I can speak to, um, our store is just adult use. Um, however, we do sometimes have people come in, um, who are members of the medical program and have cards and participate in the medical program. And we treat them, um, just give this, them the same level of service that we would in any of our medical dispensaries.
Peyton, would you like to share anything regarding that particular question?
Yes, please. Thank you for the floor. I would just add that what we've seen in terms of top three uses are stress, sleep and anxiety. Um, we are leveraging a solution in store called Tetrogram, while it's positioned more so for medical patients, there is a consumer market on the adult use side. It's informed the products that we're carrying. Additionally speaking, acknowledging that within the adult use market, there hasn't been a lot of education. Uh, we've been able to partner with a group of former registered nurses in order to provide, uh, better guidance in terms of ensuring folks understand the verbiage of indica sativa hybrid as it relates to them making selections from our menus. We found this to be extremely beneficial in terms of helping customers, um, make the best selections for their personal usage. Um, but your question is a good one as we think about the future of adult use.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from my colleagues or guests? And if not, I'm, oh, okay, uh, sorry, uh, Counselor Govan, please.
Thank you so much, and, um, thank you to all the, um, uh, dispensary owners and cannabis owners in our city. And thank you for doing business, um, in the city of Springfield. I actually had a question regarding what you were just talking about, the education to the community. I'm wondering if there might be, um, an opportunity to have you all come out possibly to the, uh, neighborhood council meetings, you know, to do a presentation or something like that, and especially about the CBD, which is a non-THC, um, products. Um, because I'm aware that they are very beneficial to, um, you know, um, conditions that you've talked about, sleep, anxiety, um, even energy and focus. So I just was hoping that we might be able to, um, do some educational, maybe you guys come out to the community meetings and, um, educate the community to a some degree. I'm not, I'm not sure if that's a possibility. I noticed it not in the community host agreement, but, um, I think it would be really beneficial to the residents.
We're of course more than willing to do that, just sending along the information. We could have one of our pharmacists on staff participate in that conversation.
So. I had another question, uh, regarding, and I'm not sure if this is appropriate at this time, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, but it's regarding the, um, the way you all are doing business and how lucrative it has been, or if there have been any challenges, um, for you, um, in our city.
Actually, that, it is appropriate, and I think that we kind of, I was gonna, would, would slide into that a little bit into the second agenda item, which is the discussion on the hours, parking, traffic, safety incidents and anything pertaining to, um, your operation, but, um, I know, I believe that my, the council president has created a committee to oversee the excess or the three percent uh, surcharge on the taxes that's supposed to be spent. Um, uh, it's supposed to be spent, uh, it within a certain distance around these dispensaries as they come online. Um, but I guess the thing is, is, and I was going to ask the question, the market from, I understand from the media nationally is, is it has been starting to change, uh, that the wholesale price of cannabis has been reduced. Um, uh, we have three operationals and several more in the pipeline. We, as a city, were late getting to the table. Um, so many of the communities are, uh, North Hampton, East Hampton area seem to be oversaturated. Uh, and with the, the ones that have already got their licenses that are still working toward it. Could any of you three owners address Counselor Govan's question in terms of, uh, some of the challenges that you're dealing with? And, uh, you know, not, uh, not expecting you guys to share anything proprietary or private in terms of your business. But could you at least, uh, to make a general attempt to answer Counselor Govan's question? And then also, um, perhaps, uh, we can, I'll, I'll move into the other questions related to, in that general area after hearing what you have to say in her, in response to her question.
Sure, th- this is Steve Riley from NSA again, and, uh, we expect two thousand twenty-three to become very difficult. Uh, you know, the market is sort of trending in that direction. We've seen price compression, both at the wholesale level as well as the retail level, and we expect that that's gonna continue. Um, not sure that Massachusetts has struck the right balance, the supply and demand on product. And we anticipate a very difficult retail environment for two thousand twenty-three. Um, also, if the, the general economy has a downturn, we do expect that that would also impact the business as well. So, um, we're very cautious about the Massachusetts market going forward.
Uh, Peyton or Jamie?
Jamie, feel free to go first, as you all have been open longer.
Oh, certainly. Okay, thank you Peyton. Um, so I would just say, uh, again, Jamie Ware for Liberty Cannabis, I'd say that we have similar concerns. Uh, Steve, I think it is challenging for any state to open an industry, right? And sort of try to figure out how to, um, help that industry thrive. And so I think that the CCC and, um, many other individuals, legislators and everyone involved is trying to figure out how to strike the balance that, that, that lets, um, that lets, uh, businesses and, and supports businesses in their success. Um, I will say that, uh, market compression, compression is a huge challenge. Um, and, uh, we are just going to do the best we can to continue to serve the patients and the consumers that we do in Massachusetts. Um, but we do expect twenty twenty-three to be a hard year.
Peyton?
Hi, Peyton Schubert with Six Bricks. Um, I would share a similar sentiments, but with the difference being because Six Bricks is a true standalone retailer and not a multi-state operator, we are in a very different boat as we think about progression forward. And we were, um, the most recent to open as well. Um, so it is top of mind as we think about what twenty twenty-three will look like with market consolidation and the reality that I am not vertically integrated as we think about our overall operations and the impact that could potentially have as we are still in the phase of, uh, brand awareness and customer acquisition.
Okay, um, has any of you of the operators had any, I'm sorry, have any of you operators, can you, any of you, I believe that, uh, in terms of traffic, I've driven by Liberty, I've never seen other large crowd there. Um, Peyton had, I've not seen, you know, cars outside. Uh, probably just more, I guess, directed to, um, Mr. Riley, but the other two, if, if it's appropriate, could answer as well. Um, traffic, um, has it been an issue for you, Donna, on Columbus Avenue, on Mr. Riley? You muted?
Sorry about that. Uh, no, uh, so we've had certain days where, uh, you know, it can be busier or if we've had systems issues where there could be, um, some small backups, but generally we hire police details. Uh, we have them there on site. Uh, we're able to process transactions very quickly and the size of the lot is, is conducive to the amount of traffic that we're getting at the site. So, um, I would say on a day-to-day basis, there's, there's no issue with traffic there.
Uh, Peyton or Jamie, any questions related to traffic?
Oh, I'll go ahead and go, um, Jamie again. No, no issues related to traffic, safety, parking or anything, um, in, in that, along that line.
Um, Peyton, I assume that's, you can, uh, will agree?
Yep, no issues on our end.
Okay, um, the other thing that I was concerned or would like to hear about is, is that I understand that somebody died in, in the area of Western Mass related to cannabis, um, uh, working at a facility. Uh, have any of you, you know, could any of you, uh, three, uh, representatives speak on any incidents that you may have had? Uh, uh, you know, a call to the police department, have you had any disturbances onsite? Or anything that we should be aware of or that might be coming down the pipe that, or that, um, could you speak to the, any of those?
I'll start. Incidents in production, no, we haven't had anything. We have a safety, we have an OSHA safety person on staff, uh, full-time, so we, we try to be proactive on all those kind of things.
How about people coming in, uh, any disputes, uh, the, are you having problems with people with false IDs? Um, are there police, need for police interventions?
No, I mean, we, we have, you know, every once in a while, we'll have the person that won't have an ID when they come in and will have to refuse service. They might get a little excited about that, but we haven't had anything, anything meaningful.
Okay, Jamie?
We've had no issues in Springfield.
Thank you, Peyton?
No issues, the biggest, um, thing that we've come across is expired IDs, um, and helping folks, um, understand what they need in order to properly enter, um, but outside of that, no issues.
Okay, um, the third item that I wanted to kind of to get into was the discussion of the, um, it, it relates to the changing market as well. Uh, it is my understanding and I appreciate, you know, what Mr. Riley said about the, um, the challenges and expected in coming in twenty-three. Um, I believe that, um, there is a delivery license, uh, that was issued for, that covers the city of Springfield. Um, I believe, and, uh, I also believe that the city of Springfield has been designated as a test site for social onsite consumption. And my, is my understanding that they are still working on the regulations around that issue. Um, and also, if I'm, I'm concerned and hopeful that as this industry, this budding industry continues to grow, that, um, the, uh, state would invest in, um, research. And that was one of the things when they, when they were talking about the laws being created in this industry coming into, uh, fruition was about research and I'm hopeful that if the state were to invest in a research facility that it would, they would consider doing it here in Western Mass since there's an oversaturation of, um, in operations in an eastern part of state where always seem to be, you know, the last to get the benefits of those types of new industries. Um, so any of you, uh, probably starting with Steve, once again, since, uh, I believe you've been the longest. Could you speak to any of those three things, uh, delivery, social consumption and research?
Yeah, so, uh, delivery, um, there's challenges around delivery. We don't have the ability to do delivery right now, so it's something that we would look at in the future. Um, we do do delivery with a partner, a social equity partner in the Boston area. Um, what we found is that it's a very difficult business to run based on the regulations that are in place. So, something that we would pay attention to here, if we had a good partner, we'd be interested in doing, but what we find is that it's a, it's a very difficult business to, to, to run. Um, onsite consumption, we don't have any immediate plans to do that. Um, we'll probably review those regulations when they come out and if it's an opportunity, we'll, we'll probably take a look at it. But we have had some internal discussions and at this point, there's not a, a desire to, to want to do onsite consumption yet. Uh, but we'll take a look at the regs and see what they are. Um, in terms of research, um, are you talking about like third-party research? Or, or research that we would do on, on the plant? Uh, just trying to clarify that a little bit.
Well, I, the thing is, is when, when we were being sold this, this, you know, this industry coming into Springfield, um, Springfield Techno Community College was mentioned, Holyoke Community College was mentioned. I've heard recently that AIC was interested, but there was quite often we heard about educational opportunities in the industry and, um, I, I assume this, you know, there's, there's no strains in things coming out and we're having conversations in between about medicinal use that is not just being so, uh, on Cottage Street, but through the, uh, the retail establishments as well. So, just generally looking to see, um, where your thoughts are on that, uh, as, as operators.
Yeah, so there's, there's research on the plant, which is one kind of way to look at it. And we've actually engaged in a number of discussions, um, most recently with some researchers at Yale to try to look at the impacts of cannabis on, uh, migraines, severe migraines. So there's, there's that piece which we try to be involved in. Um, and then there's, I think, the training and education piece that you're talking about, like with STCC or Holyoke, uh, Community College. HCC and AIC, um, were the two entities that we had the most discussions with. Um, and I can't recall where we left off with programs with them. Um, a lot of this, uh, kind of fell off a little bit with COVID, so, you know, it's something we've, wherever we operate, we try to get, uh, to work on these kind of programs, but I, I can't tell you exactly where we're at with, uh, either AIC or STCC right now.
Before I go any further, I see Counselor Fenton has a question. Counselor Fenton?
Thank you, um, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to, um, bring up a point on this. On, on social consumption, um, I served on the Social Consumption Advisory Committee of the CCC. It's going on a couple of years ago, appointed by the CCC and the governor. And those regulations actually went live, so, um, was involved in drafting those and, um, there's actually a pilot program. was involved in drafting those and, um, there's actually a pilot program that the CCC authorized, uh, at our request, and I requested that Springfield be included in that pilot program for social consumption. Um, in the interim, we had a pandemic that complicated matters and sort of delayed, I think, what the CCC was willing to do in terms of deploying that program. But, um, admittedly, I've lost track of it a little bit since the, since we did, uh, put those regulations into the CMR, so, uh, I just wanted to clarify that, that the regulations are in effect and there is an opportunity for a pilot program. I just don't know that the CCC ever got it, um, up and running, uh, in the post-pandemic environment. So if there is an appetite uh, to do that in Springfield, uh, and I, I'd be happy to renew those discussions with the CCC uh, to make sure that it's done in a way that's consistent with the regs and that highlights the intent of the pilot program, which was to offer the opportunity in places like Springfield. Um, and then if it's, if it's appropriate, Mr. Chair, just based on the conversations that we're having before, I had a couple of other questions. One was regarding the hours and one is regarding medical use. So Steve indicated earlier about operating on Cottage Street and having the only um, medicinal license in the city. Um, I, I, this isn't really so much a question as it is a statement. I think our intent was always to, uh, revise the zoning ordinance after we got up and running with cannabis in Springfield to uh, match the zoning requirements for, uh, retail to medicinal. And I don't believe that that's happened, which, which creates a gap and an unintended one, because it means that it's harder to cite a medical facility than it is a retail facility, which really is counterintuitive, at least to my, uh, perspective. So I think, you know, one thing we should consider as a city is is making that change and updating the regulations so that the zoning restrictions for medicinal match the zoning restrictions for retail, which are currently less rigorous. And then, um, the final point, which is, which is a question is about hours and the changing competitive environment. I'd like to know if the three operators all have the same hours of operation and what competitors are doing in other surrounding communities uh, to, so we can make an assessment of whether or not that uh, is appropriate based on what's currently in effect. So Liberty and, and Insa and Six Brick, what, what are your respective hours of operation?
Uh, we close at nine PM on, on West Columbus. It's seven PM. This is into, uh, again, uh, seven PM on Cottage Street. Um, I know that West Springfield passed zoning that would allow for eleven. Um, what we're seeing right now is Holyoke at eleven. Some of the billboards that you'll see when you enter the city will advertise that fact. So when you, when you pull into Massachusetts, one of the first things you'll see is a billboard for a dispensary um, in Holyoke advertising the fact that they're open late. Um, we've got dispensaries that kind of run the gamut in terms of hours. Our, our longest um, is in Salem. I think we're seven AM to eleven PM in Salem. And, and we don't find that those additional hours invite any kind of issues, but it certainly does give a competitive advantage to all the businesses in the city. Um, if Springfield's able to say, you don't need to go to Holyoke and come spend your money in Springfield, that benefits all the operators here and benefits the city as well, based on the additional revenue that they would get.
Thank you. Uh, Jamie or Peyton? Yeah. But we can't just keep the order. Uh, Jamie, would you like to, uh, comment on that?
Sure. We're open Monday through Saturday, ten to eight, and Sunday, eleven to five.
And your thoughts on possibly the hours being adjusted?
Well, I don't want to speak too out of turn because I, I want to confirm with the retail, um, leadership. But my understanding is that we are, at least on the Monday through Saturday, hours operating to the, to the max of the zoning requirements and we would, you know, invite the opportunity. We think it would be obviously, um, better for the store if we could be, you know, open a, a longer, uh, period of time, but I do need to confirm that we are indeed, again, at the full uh, capacity of what zoning allows us.
Peyton, please.
Six Bricks is currently open nine AM to nine PM every day. Um, we have had the conversation based on our regular customers that are now coming in about whether or not we should adjust that first hour to instead open at eight. That way, folks that uh, are coming into the city for work or conferences and meetings, um, have the opportunity to engage with us prior to a nine AM start. Um, and then as we think about, um, staying open past nine PM, I do think it does bring, um, an interesting opportunity, especially if you couple that with the nightlife that we're starting to see emerge with MGM and many other establishments in downtown Springfield such as Dewey's, um, and we would definitely, um, be open to understanding what that could look like here in the city of Springfield at the city council, where to move in that direction.
Counselor Hurst has his hand up. Counselor Hurst, would you, your question, please? Or a comment?
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just along those lines, I, I'd also love to hear from, uh, the individuals here representing, uh, the cannabis companies. Uh, if they have any other recommendations outside of just hours that may help uh, them as we embark on what they're saying is a difficult year. So it's not something that needs to be answered now, but maybe something that could be submitted to you, Mr. Chair, and then potentially, you know, the city council can, can act on it if we see fit. Uh, so that, that was the first more of a statement. Um, the second thing is that, um, Mr. Riley, you're, you have a um, medicinal license. Uh, do we have any idea when your host community agreement expires? For some reason, I felt like, um, I feel like you all are near that time. Is that accurate?
Uh, there's no expiration date on it, continues.
There's no extra date, expiration date? Some reason I thought it was five years and then you all were were renewed for another five years. Is that not accurate? I haven't read that anywhere in the HCA. Um, I think you're on mute or else I can't hear you.
Sorry about that. Uh, the terms of the fifth year just continue on and the contract doesn't expire.
Interesting. So you get to have a monopoly on medicinal marijuana forever? That's, I don't have any other questions, Mr. Chair, um, other than I, I do believe I see Attorney G on here. Um, I, I definitely would love more information on that. For some reason, I thought it was ten years. Uh, but if that is not the case, then I would love to know more information on it.
Uh, Attorney G, uh, is, if, if you're comfortable, could you address that particular comment or question? Um, and is there anything that restricts anybody else from operating a, a medicinal uh, dispensary applying to operate a municipal, um, dispensary in the city of Springfield?
Uh, if I, if I may, um, Mr. Chairman, I think there's a couple of different questions on the floor, so I'll try to sort of answer them. So in terms of the, the terms of the, uh, host community agreement for Insa's medical operation, I'll have to take a look at the host community agreement. It's not an agreement that I actually wrote or worked on, so I, unfortunately, I don't sort of have that at my fingertips. Uh, generally, the, um, agreements last for five years and they sort of automatically renew. That's my understanding. But I will certainly, what I can do is I can, um, take a look at the particular agreement that we are speaking about and then I can, um, I, I can provide an answer to you as the chair.
Yeah, and, and that would apply to, your, your inquiry would be applicable to both the, um, retail and medicinal, correct?
Um, I thought the question was about the medicinal, um, operation.
I guess so. Then my question is, is there the HCHs that are given for, um, retail? Do they have a five-year timeframe as well?
So the ones that I'm familiar with from the second round, they do, but so just to provide context for this conversation, so initially when the host community agreements, uh, when the Insa's medical host community agreement was issued, that was in the first round where, when, um, the only legal marijuana operations pursuant to the statute were medical operations, then the law changed. Um, so then the law impacted the host community agreement. Um, and then there was a second round of host community agreements that were also issued and I believe that Insa, um, I believe, but I'm not positive on this history, I believe uh, Insa was selected in the second round as well, or maybe they were not. I, I'm strike that. Let me strike that. Um, but they were selected in the first round, I do know that. But to answer your, your other question about operations, to operate in the city, you have to have a host community agreement. And the way that you obtain the host community agreement is through the, um, RF, responding to the RFP or RFQ um, proposal that is put out by the city. So if there's nothing for you to respond to, then there's no, there's no way for you to obtain a host community agreement, if that makes sense.
So that, yes, they, so they don't, no other applicant can apply unless the, the city of Springfield put out an RFP requesting uh, interest in, in another um, medicinal facility.
To apply to open, to, to apply to open a new operation. Now that, that applies to anything though, right? That applies to if they want to, uh, um, start a cultivation center here in the city. Um, they would need to respond to an RFP. So if there's no RFP that's out at the time, then there's no way to obtain a host community group.
Okay, uh, I see Counselor Allen. Uh, first of all, Counselor Hurst, are you, uh, do you have another question?
No, um, Attorney G, if you could just get me the information on the, uh, HCA that was signed, uh, by Insa as it relates to medicinal marijuana, I greatly appreciate that, uh, as I think that will tell me, tell me what it is that I need to know. Um, thank you.
If I may, Counselor, um, Hurst, just to confirm, you just want to know the expiration date? Is that correct?
I do. For some reason, I thought it was five years with a five-year option to renew. I think we've got to be very close to that tenth year, so I assumed at that point in time that, you know, it, it would make sense to open it up as opposed to it continuously renewing for an additional five years without giving other folks the opportunity to be a part of this, uh, business industry, uh, if they want to. And maybe there's not an appetite for it, but I just can't imagine that one company can, can have a license and be only licensed forever. That doesn't make sense to me. Um, so anyhow, if you can give me that information, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Attorney G, could you send that requested information to the entire committee or all present? Uh, as well as the, uh, colleagues on the council who are not present as well?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. And I see Counselor Allen, you, the floor is yours.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Pre, Mr. Chair. Um, my question is about the financial payments that are made. You know, what prompts them? Are they on a quarterly basis or, uh, you know, a regular basis? Um, how is the, how is it calculated? In, does the city just receive an amount from you that they don't know ahead of time what that amount's going to be? Any information on that would be, would be great, would be useful.
Perhaps Attorney G, is that something you can answer or is?
Yes, Counselor, uh, I can answer generally. So the, um, the operators are required to provide, um, financial records with their quarterly payments. Generally, everyone is on a quarterly payment. Um, I, I don't have all thirteen contracts at my hands to, to say that everyone's got a quarterly payment, but I can't imagine that someone is not. Um, um, but generally, um, they have to provide, um, financial records along with their, uh, payments. So that's how the city knows how much they're supposed to receive.
So the city, does the city receive that in advance or is that record of of different, and so, you know, records arrive at the same time the check arrives kind of thing?
I'm sorry, Counselor, uh, Allen, I wasn't able to hear your question. I, I think you were going a little out and out for me.
Yeah, I'm on, I'm in my car headed to a meeting. Um, yeah, just, you know, whenever that payment occurs quarterly, the records, a, a company, the check that is sent to the city at the same time?
That is my understanding, but the financial office actually handles that, so that's not something that I can confirm, um, for certain. But I can find out.
Well, I, I was talking to, uh, Lindsay last week about it, so you don't need to. I, I'll, I'll just continue, uh, talking with her about it, that coming from a finance committee point of view. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen, and thank you, Counsel, uh, Attorney G. Uh, that pretty much covers everything I wanted to discuss and except for, um, kind of echo, um, the comments of, uh, Counselor Hurst. Um, I'd like to hear from the three operators, some suggestions or at least offer for them to give some thought, uh, for a potential future meeting on how the city can be more supportive of this industry moving forward. I know Connecticut is now online legally, New York is online, uh, and I'm not an expert on the industry as itself, but I anything that we could do to keep my, our our, our neighbors employed and keep revenues coming into the city's coffers, I'd like to be able to be supportive of. Um, but I, I also see, uh, Counsel, uh, Attorney G's hand is up. Attorney G, did you have something you wanted to share or offer?
I did, Counselor Edwards, thank you for recognizing me. Um, I did just want to note that I'm looking at the time. I have a court hearing that starts on Zoom at two PM, so I will need to, um, log off and in about a couple of minutes, but I did just want to, to let you know that I wanted to stay on for a few minutes to hear, uh, the response from the operators.
Okay, I understand and, and I think we're, we're very close to winding up. My intention was to be on no longer than an hour. I think we're on schedule to do so. Um, but, uh, Peyton, I see your hand is up. Would you like to offer some suggestions and, and let, um, in response to my question?
Yes, I would like to and, um, like Attorney G, I do have the constraint of having to be off that too, so I appreciate you keeping us honest with the sixty-minute meeting. Um, relative to your third agenda item around discussion of cannabis delivery, social consumption and research, I do think that it's important, um, as we progress for, with the cannabis industry here in the city of Springfield that we think through the impact, especially around social equity and economic empowerment applicants. While I acknowledge cannabis delivery is challenging, it's one of the licensures that is exclusive to social equity and economic empowerment applicants for the first three years. And so it is a way in which we can look at diversifying those who are able to engage in the cannabis industry. I'm sure you all have seen the stats, but it's safe to say the industry, um, did not do what it, uh, intended to when we first thought about it rolling out, meaning providing opportunities for people of color in their community. And the fact that I'm the only, uh, owner of color within the city is very telling of that. So what I would encourage, uh, progression forward is thinking about ways in which, um, we can get more people of color and more women, um, within this industry and really start to focus on strategic partnerships with economic empowerment applicants as well as social equity applicants. Social consumption will also be a license type that is exclusive, um, to social equity and economic empowerment folks within that first three-year window. And while I acknowledge that folks may like to do things themselves, I do think collaboration will be key, especially as we look at a tough twenty twenty-three and the unknown of twenty twenty-four. And lastly, as it relates to research, I can speak to Six Bricks engaging heavily with American International College. Myself being an adjunct professor for their seat-to-sail courses and us spinning up our own internship program so that we can help uh, folks who want to do research, um, in a dispensary environment. Um, so I say all of that to say there are more opportunities and ways to get creative, uh, but we also need to address the broader issues that are plaguing this industry, which is to say there are not enough people from the city of Springfield that look like myself engaging or being invited to engage in this industry. So I'll stop there. Thank you. That look like myself engaging or being invited to engage in this industry. So I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to, uh, if, are there any other questions or comments from any of my colleagues? Hearing none, I, or Counselor Perez?
I just want to say, excuse me, as being the one city councilwoman since the inception, the opening of Six Bricks. It has been a good collaboration, no concerns. I mean, I pass there every day, the safety and the population that they serve. There's no issues and they are good neighbors and I need to testify to that because at the beginning and I'm always transparent and fair. We were kind of very, um, and it's because it's a new industry. We need to understand that. And we still learning process, but I just wanted to make that statement. Thank you so much.
Well, I'm going to, uh, suggest and ask that my colleagues give consideration to, um. The comments of Counselor Fenton and, uh, and perhaps through the president. Figuring out a way that we can, um, have a discussion regarding hours of operation being possibly expanded to eleven o'clock. And also, uh, I would invite the operators and representatives of the operates, uh, operations that are, uh. Presently open in the city and even those in the pipeline. If you guys, uh, this industry needs support, um, your contributions to our taxes and to our, uh, to your taxes and to your. Employment of our residents is important. So I would suggest and ask respectfully that you guys would send to even. And my colleagues ideals and how we can be more su- supportive of what you need to do to be successful. Um, the goal was not to have you open and close or not to be, uh, you know, um, to have you struggle. And I know that the industry is different now that Connecticut, um, there are, and New York is online and I assume, um. Certainly a lot more competition north of us, right here, even in Massachusetts. Um, so. Is there any other questions or comments from any of my colleagues? Uh, if there is not, I want to thank all of you for your patience, your time, um, and for the informative information that you've shared with us. Um, I, I will confer with my colleagues and I'm, as Sharon, a planning and economic development. I don't assume that this will be my last meeting. I believe that my president or our president of the council has charged one of our colleagues. With having, uh, oversight or doing, um, having discussions around the three percent, so I'm not going to get into that. Contributions, uh, access texts, um, and I'll leave that for them for when they have their meeting. But if there's no other questions or comments, uh, once again, I want to say thank you, everyone, for your time and for, uh, sharing the information with us and, um. Please, everyone, have a great day.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you.